Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. We will start with oath of office, or do I, I don't do roll call first, do I?
You can do roll call, and then you have your election officers.
Okay, let's do roll call first. Start with Danny.
Dan Wicker, President.
Brietta Pitcock.
Rex Snyder, President.
Nathan Alrick.
Okay.
And Gene Gabbard is absent.
Okay, we will start with our oath of office for everybody that is here. Raise your hand.
Stand.
Stand.
Oh, well, if you want to stand, we can stand, I guess. I don't know if I'm like having you sit over here by me or not. I state your name.
Aye, Nathan Alrick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And diligently.
And diligently.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Of Town Council.
Of Town Council.
For the Town of Dublin.
For the Town of Dublin.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Sign your name. You are official. Okay, I will take nominations for Council President.
In case anyone's wondering, state law provides at the very first meeting of the year, your clerk treasurer does preside at the meeting until a president's elected. That's why Julie is doing what she is doing.
And it's not because I talk all the time and I usually take over the meeting anyway.
I didn't, I didn't want to add that.
Do I have any nominations for Town Council President?
I nominate Nathan Alrick.
Second.
Okay. Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I knew that Gene did state before the meeting he did not want to be an officer.
Yes, for the record. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Nathan is President, and you can now do a motion for nominations for Vice President.
All right, we'll open up the nominations for Vice President of the Town of Dublin for year 2024.
I nominate Rex Snyder.
Okay, is there a second, or is there another nomination?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Rex will be the Vice President. If the board doesn't mind, I'm a political person and feel like a lot of people died for our freedoms to be able to have these meetings. I'd like to start each meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, if that's okay with everyone.
Sounds good to me.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is we have a couple of representatives from Big B Trash. If you guys would introduce yourselves and what title you have with the company.
I'm Jeremy, Sales Manager.
I'm Dean, Route Manager.
I guess you know, while we're here, just for the folks at home on the camera, we had some issues with trash pickup over the holiday season. Obviously, our trash pickup is on Mondays, which is when Christmas Day and New Year's Day both fell. So, our trash was going to get picked up on the following Saturday. For some reason, trash truck came early on Fridays, so people weren't expecting that. And then some others put trash out, then put trash out, and it was just a clomberated mess. And that's about the best way I can explain it. And I know, I know everyone at home realizes it was a mess, so I guess we're here to discuss where do we go from here? Obviously, it's done and over with, there's nothing we want to be able to do to correct the problem we had, but.
Well, I, I can't correct the problem that we had by making sure that I have people here. And what I say by that is, I approve, it wasn't my fault that it kind of got debacle'd up, right? I'll take blame for that. I'm not taking all the blame, though. With that being said, I did let my driver come in here Friday early with the understanding that the other driver's going to come in Saturday like scheduled. However, that driver quit. I did not know he didn't come here until Lanny called me on New Year's Eve.
Now, he just parked the truck and left?
But he didn't, I didn't even come in to work.
Oh, okay.
So.
He was, he was on vacation.
Yeah, I, my wife had surgery two days prior, so I was off Wednesday, Thursday, that, or Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And had I known that that driver wasn't going to come in, I would have had somebody here like I had somebody here Tuesday, Wednesday, Saturday, Monday. You guys have had five trucks in this town in the last week. So, I did everything that I could to remedy the problem at the time. I do have a solution moving forward as far, and it won't affect you guys next year because Christmas is on Wednesday, but. Anytime we do have issues, Julie's emailed me, and then I fixed the problem like today. She emailed me yesterday and said we had three guys with totes that were broken. I got them replaced today. However, one of the citizens had a tote by the garage, apparently it was broken. My guy shows up and he wasn't there. So, he didn't know to leave a tote, where to leave the tote. So, I don't know who grabbed that tote or moved it or what, but I am fixing problems and I do respond. I don't ignore emails or phone calls or anything, obviously, because I answered a phone call on New Year's Eve from Lanny, so.
The big issue I had from the actual community was when they tried to call Big B's number, it just went to like some unknown answering service. And it was like another home company that answered the phone and didn't even say Big B Trash, and that really confused everybody.
Unfortunately, that has been a problem for like six months. It's a, it's a problem with the carrier, not our phones. So, so apparently some, the carrier for our phone system has gave somebody else.
Our 1-800 number that we've had for 40 years, AT&amp;T decided to give to another, sell to another company. Without any notice, so people would, I finally called on, people started calling me and saying, we're calling your 1-800 number and it's going to some like Medicare stuff or something. So, they're in the process of trying to get that back.
What is the official number people should call?
I'd call 765-529-2337.
529-2337.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We don't have, I don't know if you got, we don't have an operator that answers the phone either. So, you know, we've got five people that answer phones, 4,000 customers, there's always something going on, right? So.
You have an answering machine, go look at that.
We should have, yes.
We do.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I didn't read the contract again, apologize for that, but I feel like it only was, you guys were only off on Christmas Day, and it wasn't any other holidays, but I could be mistaken by that.
We'd have to look in the contract, but.
That's his area.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was Christmas and New Year's Day in the contract. We can double check, but if it wasn't, when Dean became Route Manager, Dean has been for the last, the owner of our company, he's old school, man. It's, it's work, you know what I mean? That's just how he's built, that's how he's always been. He's still, he's 67 years old, he's still the first one in and one of the last ones leaves, hands dirty every, every day. Dean came in and tried, you know, so we used to always work the holidays. The drivers come in, either they come in early or later or whatever, but he, he, you know, his, in his mindset for the last 60 years is trash doesn't stop just goes Christmas Day. You know what I mean? So, but when Dean came in, Dean was like, look, man, let's try to give our drivers the day off, you know what I mean? So, that's where the whole thing of coming in on Saturday and picking it up, but then the driver.
I think the whole Friday thing is what confused everybody.
Yeah, that probably.
That did, I agree with that. That was, like I said, that was on me, I let that driver come in with the understanding that the other guys are coming in on Saturday as well.
And it would have been fine had the guy that, yeah, whoever was here Saturday and picked up every place instead of just the.
Yeah, he's young.
And that's more.
That was the rear load truck, right, that came in on Saturday, yeah.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it's, it's not his, I don't want to say this, it's not his job to do the other trucks' work, right? He had 300 stops himself on Saturday with your town being 200 of them. So, in my understanding, after Lanny called me was at least half the town got done Saturday. And then he calls me and says, we got a problem. I said, yeah, you're right, I'll have the truck there Tuesday. Just to pick up Saturday, right? But we ended up coming back Wednesday, and then Saturday again, and then today, or yesterday.
And, you know, when they, when customers call in, when they started calling in going, you know, hey, the truck was here on Friday, that is one thing that Nancy and I, you know, we assume that because this was different, you guys were just trying to pick up any extra because it was the holiday, and that's the way we presented it to those that called, and that you would still be back on Saturday, so they're, you know, and of course, we didn't know someone wasn't, wasn't going to show up. I have a, a big question, and I may be overstepping my boundary, we've discussed it before, but why do we have two different trucks? Why can't we just have one truck as the whole town?
You guys don't want your totes on 40, this is what I was told, and the side load truck is too big to go down the alleys.
So, why can't we just have the rear load, because that's what we did ask?
That I don't know.
I'm looking at you.
That's not, that's not on me. Whoever decided that.
Randy, before you came along and the owner of the company was kind of filling in for the Route Manager position, he is the one that made the decision to bring both trucks. I can go back and ask him.
It gets confusing, I think, because if they have one tote and it's packed full, because when I've spoken to Patty and Beth, I was told that, you know, the lid pretty much has to be down in order for, I call it the one-armed bandit, to pick it up. So, if it's full to the max and overflowing, I'm assuming he calls the other truck to pick it up. And if that doesn't happen.
No, that's not what he does, he picks it up anyway. He's not, he doesn't have to.
Okay.
Okay, because the lid is open and there's trash above the lid. He doesn't have to, but he picks it up anyway.
Okay, but there are times when they're missing and that's what we're assuming.
I understand when people get missed, right? And because we're human.
Right.
And if we do get missed, you usually email me and I have them here on Tuesday. So, I can't, we can't fix human error by missing residents, or, and I'll just be honest with you, sometimes I think citizens fill up their trash again and put it back out and say, we missed it. So, I'm not going to take all the blame.
No, I understand that.
On that part of it. I think some people maybe don't have it out on time because maybe sometimes we get it earlier than what we normally do, or we get it later, either case, but.
And there was a time, just for the record, that they did have cameras in their vehi, in the trucks, so they could take pictures if they went by and there was no trash there, and someone called in and said, hey, you missed my trash. Patty was always like, no, it's on you, it's not on us.
Yeah.
So, just for the record, that, that is there.
They do have capabilities of taking pictures on their tablets.
But that takes time.
They're also encouraged to take pictures.
Yeah.
So, you know, that helps.
Protects everybody.
It is.
Yeah, for sure. And, and not just this town, but any people that we service, if it's an ongoing problem, then we have to go a different route.
Right.
And take care of the problem.
And we try to, you know, if, if you're going to have more, and that's the way it was explained to us, if you're going to have more than what goes in a tote with the tote closed on a regular basis, they need to call and get a, a second tote. And the second tote is a lot cheaper.
It's $36 a year.
Uh, yeah, and instead of 13 a month, so there's, it, it's worth it for people to, to get that. I just, to me, just having a rear load truck do everybody in town makes more sense than having two trucks, three guys and a lot of confusion.
We're old school, so that's what we used to do, so it's kind of hard.
It's, it's hard for us to get away from that. And our people were spoiled, and, you know, they, you know, if, and when, you know, we, when you guys first started, we got, we filled in lots of phone calls because your people were coming from different places at different times, and it's like, I got people that are used to being picked up at 7:05, and they weren't here by 7:15, and, you know, so.
We get those calls daily.
Yeah.
I mean, you have just some people that sit there and watch the trash can.
It's amazing, isn't it?
Like, it's 10:30, they're not here yet.
It is, it is.
You know, trucks break down, people don't come in, they come in late, there's all kinds of variables that can go on. But I just want you to know that when you do have a problem, I'm here to fix it.
Yes.
And what happened during this, that ain't going to happen again, okay? Because if it does, I may not have a child. That won't happen again. That was a learning curve on my part, he kind of let me do what I wanted to do without telling me. My learned, and, and I'm sitting here as a man to tell you that that won't happen again, and that was my fault, and I apologize.
Well, we appreciate that, appreciate, I mean, obviously, your holiday and vacation and so forth, I definitely appreciate that. I, I think just the, the issue with trying to call somebody was a lot of the frustration that folks were having.
Sure.
With that number, so.
Right. Always, I know that she can pass, give my email out if you need to, to people.
I give the phone number out for them to call.
Yeah, they can email me personally if they have a problem, then I'll double check probably with you just to make sure, you know, I mean. So, but I have no problems filling in emails from customers here anywhere, so.
I appreciate you guys taking time to come in, I know it was just a disaster, and you know.
It was.
We're obviously in a tight spot with no answers to be given, so.
Right.
Well, you have an answer now.
Appreciate that.
It won't happen again, and unfortunately, I had two drivers quit that same week, and one came in with COVID, so we were, we were in bad shape. But nonetheless, we had five trucks here in the last week. May, trying to make up for what we.
I do appreciate that.
That way, there was anything, you know what I mean? So, we're trying, I've got customers, I'm out on a daily basis, that's my job, I go around to different towns and, and, you know, get, get people to switch service to us. And waste management is predominant down in the Rushville area right now, and they've got customers down there that haven't had trash picked up in a month.
Wow.
You know what I mean? So, we, like, I really appreciate it, Dean, him and I work closely together on, on everything. When I bring in a new customer, whether it's a town like Dublin, or whether it's just an individual commercial customer, or a residential customer, that, I all, I have to take them all through Dean because he has to set it all up, route them all, get them all, you know what I mean? So, and, and you, you can email me too anytime, you still have my email and my cellphone, I believe, so call me, I'm out and about all the time anyways. We want to, like I said, that's why I appreciated Dean getting a truck here when he found, when he did find out, when he got the phone call, you know what I mean? And then they told me, I was like, oh, no.
Well, you know, Lanny was on vacation too, so, I mean, just everybody's trying to enjoy the holiday.
Sure, yeah.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't mad at him, you know, it's like, oh, this can't be good, you know, like, so.
And I understand where Dean was coming from, I've been there for nine years, Dean's been there for a little over a year now, and, and I understand he was trying to give the guys a day off, and this is supposed to be made up this way, and then when it didn't happen, he was like, oh, you know what I mean? So, they'll go back to work on the holidays, I guess, so.
It happens.
Yeah, we just don't want to lose business, right? And not only that, is, I feel like I've known you forever. Me and Lanny's going to start hanging out, I think. You know, it's, it's a, it's a reputation I have, not only as a Big B staff, but as a person, to do the right thing, so. That's just, that's it, I mean, I want to, always want to do the right thing. And 99% of the time, if they miss on Monday, I'm here Tuesday. If I can't get here Tuesday, it's going to be Wednesday. Tuesday's a big day for us, so just depending on drivers and all that kind of thing, but.
I'll say, that was my next question, are we good for Monday? I mean, is that a prime date for you?
Mondays are perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, it's always been Mondays since I've been there. Don't like changing, I just changed about 200 customers in Knightstown from a Thursday to a, a Monday, it's not fun. I want to leave you guys on Monday.
Good deal.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate you guys coming in, taking time to visit with us, and hopefully we'll get some, some resolution and calmness in the community, so.
Any issues, don't hesitate to call, and I'll, I'll do my best to get somebody here, multiple days if I have to.
I appreciate that, so.
And we'll talk to Randy about one truck.
He told me back then, I don't remember why, I, because I, I thought to myself, well, that's silly on our part, because we're losing money, you know what I mean? As a business, to have two trucks here and three people, you know what I mean? That didn't, and he, he gave me a reason, but that's been years ago, and I don't remember what that reason was, but I'll find out.
Revisit it.
Yeah.
What, what, I will reach back out to Lanny, know what he says, but what if he says no, then what, what, what are you guys?
Pick it up.
Okay.
Just keep working on picking it up.
Pick it up.
Yeah, that's.
It just seems like an easy way.
I know, I know, I know.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, guys.
We're going to bypass a couple of things here to get our guest moving along, Scott's on duty, so we'll go ahead and have the police report.
You guys want the totals for the entire department?
Just do the month, it's fine.
Just the month.
We don't need the whole year. Right, right, right off anyway.
There's one complaint of abuse. One complaint of animal neglect. Two animal problems. Five business checks. One civil dispute. One community policing. One intoxicated person. Two mischief investigations. Three investigations. One missing person report. One noise disturbance. One sick person. Three speak with officers. One suspicious activity. One theft from a vehicle. Three traffic stops. One trespassing. Two wanted persons. And two welfare checks.
Does anybody have any questions for Scott?
You might ask him one thing that was interesting at the Cambridge meeting, the, the total calls for Cambridge versus the total calls for Dublin, did you have that? Just for the whole year?
So, the total calls for, for Dublin, which is, like Mr. Beaver said, it's included in the totals for Cambridge City. The total for, for Dublin was 437, and then overall for our department, it was 3,979. And I have numbers going back two years, if you guys are interested.
Any other reports or comments out of the ordinary?
I just thought it was interesting that, that you're getting your money's worth, that over 10% of their calls are coming to the.
Yeah, I have no complaints at all, so. I do got something for you guys to check on. Over on the far corner of the firehouse by a sign, you'll see a chair sitting there, there's a guy that has parked his chair there, and he comes over and he sits at all random hours of, the wee hours of the morning, like 2:00 in the morning. And he leaves his Mountain Dew can there, nobody knows where he is, or he doesn't cause any trouble, but it's just kind of creepy.
Right.
So, when he leaves, he just kind of walks off towards the mini mart, and that's the last we see, and then he might come back an hour later. So, I don't know who it is, you know, he just sits there and plays on his phone, but it's just kind of creepy for our crews that come in, you know, like 5:00 in the morning, so.
So, is that, you said 2:00 AM to?
Yeah, he'll be there at all the hours of the night, and, but that's his chair, he's left sitting over there. So, and he leaves his trash there occasionally, but he never causes any harm, but it's just weird.
Sure, I'll pass it along to the other night shift officer.
Thank you. Anything else for Scott, free rolls? From the board? All right, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Have a safe evening, hopefully a safe new year.
Oh, yeah.
Go to the fire report.
ALS zero, BLS 148, 9134, one fire, illegal burn, and zero water.
Any questions for the fire chief? All right, thank you, sir. Rob, you have a good holiday?
I did.
All right, well, perfect, it was great, except for no snow.
I, I've told people that I must have been living a good life at the end of last year because I didn't have to go anywhere for Thanksgiving or Christmas.
You got it.
First time in a while. I got in-laws in Ohio and family in Southern Indiana, so I was doing all right.
Good deal, tell us some good news for the new year.
Well, so your OKRA application is in. Klein Peter should have already communicated that. We expect award, and I think he said by the end of February, does that sound right?
I think so, yeah.
So, we've been, you know, I've been talking to Lanny and, and helping Mike with what he needs to get the application in, we can check that box. We've started now kind of formulating a game plan once we get notified that we're, we're official. From a, from a scheduling standpoint, my thought was to bring our design contract to you guys in February. I don't know if you want to do it in the first meeting, or the second meeting, or the second meeting in January.
How big of a project is it, and do you have a preference?
It, I mean, it's $600,000 total project cost or thereabouts.
I mean, as far as the presentation, is it like a five-minute presentation or an hour presentation?
No, I mean, I can, I can, I mean, you guys can see, this is what was in the, the application for what our fees are going to be. But I can send my contract to him in advance, and he can review it. I guess where I was going with this is, from a timing standpoint, if we can get started on the engineering part of it in February, whether it's mid or no later than the end, I think it'll, everything will time out such that once all the OKRA paperwork comes through and the grant agreement's been executed and all that stuff, as you get late spring, early summer, we can have design ready to basically immediately go to bid. And from our standpoint, we always invoice a month in the readers anyway, so worst-case scenario, I'd be carrying maybe a month's worth of labor before you guys got access to those funds for design, so I, that doesn't bother me, but it keeps us moving along, helps him with the things that we're going to be able to address with this project, and, and we're just not unnecessarily dragging it out anymore than it needs to be.
So, I mean, I guess I'm kind of reading between the lines, you're saying the first normal meeting will be the best time as far as timing?
Preferably.
Okay.
That keeps everything on track, we can get plans, specs, get any permits that we need such that middle of summer, we're ready to advertise it and go to bid.
Well, personally, my goal is not to have to have workshops unless it's necessary. I mean, unless our normal meeting's going to be three or four hours, then, you know, the workshop is probably necessary at that point.
It doesn't matter to me which, you just tell me which one you want me to be ready for, like tonight, I'll come tonight, and I've got, I have other people that can cover other meetings, so I'll work around your schedule.
Yeah, we can stick with normal meeting next month, and that way it's, the public knows about it, and it's on TV and.
So, what I'll do then is, for the design and the, the, and the construction and all that stuff, I'll, I'll put that contract together, I'll email it to you so you can share it with your attorney.
Okay.
That way, he has time to review it prior to the February meeting. If he has questions or whatnot, we can work through all that, get it to these folks in time, and then I can come, answer any questions. If not, we'll, I'll ask for approval, and then we'll get immediately going on design.
Sounds good to me.
If there's any meetings where you have a lot of discussion, just let me know ahead of time so that I can schedule a work session if we don't have one.
That's, I'll do that. A lot of the communities that I'm working in, they like to see like a written report. I'd be more than happy each month, even if I'm going to be here, sending you like a one-page summary of, here's what we've been doing, here's, here's what we plan on doing, that sort of thing. I don't, do you send out the packets for the meetings in advance?
I do, I, I send them out the Friday before the meeting.
So, if I can get you.
Sure.
My report, project-specific report, and you can get it in their packet, that way they've got it, and then when I come to the meetings, you guys may already have questions, we can get it rolling and work through it.
That'll work, thank you.
Beyond that, that's the OKRA stuff, you know, we still got, you know, you got your, your big P E R that we wrote, that's the big, big part, all the other stuff. You know, we're talking about high-service pumps and some other things that aren't necessarily in the OKRA project. We need to think about how we want to take the next steps, and, and by next steps, I mean, do we, you know, submit for funding and see what kind of offers are out there for us. Historically, you know, you've got OKRA, but historically, it's been USDA and SRF. USDA is not getting near as much money as they have in the past, and they've had some internal staff changes within the State of Indiana such that all the money that they've obligated over the last, say, 18 months to two years, they're. their, their focus right now is getting all those projects out to bid and not so much underwriting new projects. So from a, from a timing standpoint with, say, USDA, we could start an application, submit, see what we got. They probably wouldn't act on it until about the time you start construction on your Okra project at the earliest. That's just them being honest with us with how they're processing things on their end. Doesn't mean that they won't underwrite it and fund you. It just means it'll be later on this year, probably at the earliest before we get kind of any opportunities out of them. It could also likely be all or mostly loan money. Um, just because of how they're, they're being funded on a national level. Most of the grant money has been funneled through the SRF programs through all the states. I, as I was talking to the new, the new kinda, not the state engineer, not the state director, but the director of community programs, Rochelle's replacement, I don't know if you've ever talked to her, heard that name. Craig McGowan's now taking on that role. He's the community programs director and I was talking to him on Friday. The way I explained your project to him is that in my mind, to see it come to fruition and get the most bang for the buck, it would most likely end up being a collaboration between RD and SRF. With the thought that whatever grant opportunities may be out there would likely have to come from the SRF side. But knowing there would likely be some loan component as a part of the project. USDA typically has the best loan terms because you can get up to forty-year financing through them and their interest rates are generally lower than SRF. So a lot of times you'll see the two work together to try to make a project work. You know, we're prepared to start on applications for either or both for you guys. The one thing that you need to remember, and I think Julie Thomas has, has been talking to you about this. SRF has changed their requirements. Whereas in the past, when you pursued and received SRF funding, you had to certify, you had an asset management plan prior to the last draw on the interim, which is like prior to the final payment to the contractor. They've now changed it where you gotta certify that you have it when you make an application. So, um, if we so choose, if the town so chooses to pursue SRF, we need to at least get started on an asset management plan enough where you feel comfortable signing the certification that it's relatively in good shape. There's gonna be a financial component too that Baker Tilly would need to provide input on.
We've already, yeah, we've already approved a, that part.
Okay.
I know we got a quote from you.
Twenty-five thousand is what Thomas told me.
Okay.
Is that what he told you?
I think so.
Okay. I've got, if, and this doesn't have to be voted on tonight. But if you wanna pursue SRF, um, and these people are here to review if he needs to. The applications are due by the end of March. And that's to get scored and ranked on their project priority list for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, which gets published on early July. Their fiscal years are, everybody's fiscal years are wonky and different, right? Their fiscal year starts on July, July one. Applications are due, they say by April first, but for all intents and purposes, by the end of March. And when you submit the application, it requires, it's a one-page form that you certify saying we've got an asset management plan and here's our, our capital expenditure estimate for the next five years. That would be, that would put us in a pretty good position. If we can get, um, one scored and ranked in the fundable range when they publish their list. Because we can then use that as leverage depending on what potential offer we, we could receive from SRF to then go approach USDA and say, okay, here's what we got on the table. We wanna do application with you to maximize our opportunity here. How can we work together and make this happen? So that's from a timing standpoint, how that would need to work. We can, we can get started. If, if that's a direction that you wanna go on the SRF side, we can get started in, um, in February on the asset management plan piece of it. And have a draft by early March. We have, I have capacity to get that knocked out pretty quick. We, we've got a lot of the guts of it already because of the P E R. But there's a lot of, uh, of evaluation on useful life and, and consequence of failure and risk analysis that, that goes into it when you follow the SRF format for those documents. That, that would be the piece that we would then get wrapped up and try to have something to you in early March so that we can hit the timing. As far as the funding application goes, SRF's funding applications are really pretty simple. Four or five pages. Uh, we would fill it out. We would work with you. There's some resolutions that we would need to get passed in March. They require an authorized signatory resolution, which typically is the council president and could be one other person. It doesn't have to be just one. It could be more than one. And then there's a P E R acceptance resolution, which you're basically saying, yeah, we've, we've been presented the P E R. And that P E R that we wrote would get, um, attached to the funding application when we submit it. So.
How does the, uh, the twenty-five thousand for this cost, does that come out?
That, that would get, that would get wrapped into, um, the SRF big project budget so that you would be reimbursed at closing.
But we do need to pay it ahead of time.
Correct.
Okay. And that's a one-month sum or in payments?
I invoice monthly. And again, I invoice in the rears. So in theory, any, as an example, this will apply to the Okra project too. Any work that we do in February, I process those invoices at the end of March for February work. It gets to you end of March beginning eighth, so that's
But the invoice will be for the total amount or do you do, break it down?
I did percent as, as complete, percent complete each month.
Yep, I just lost it. Um, one, is there anything we can do to help score, anything extra that you need from us so that we can do to help keep that score up high enough to be able to qualify for the SRF? You know, to get us a higher score, I guess is what I'm saying.
A lot of it's based off of, um, their criteria has to do with regionalization is a big thing for them. Obviously where you're at on an existing rate structure is gonna be taken into consideration. I know. Median household income plays a major role in it. And, um, the whole health and human impacts aspects of it. And I think we'll score well on that given the risk associated with the water plant. Catastrophically failing and those types of things. Not being able to physically provide water to our customers will help us score well. But there's gonna be certain aspects that don't help us score well. So we're gonna have to lean heavily on the, the public health and safety aspects of it. We're gonna have to lean heavily on median household income aspects of it.
About the situation where we've lost water totally to
A lot of that, a lot of that's gonna come into play. Okay? Did, did they do an income survey on the Okra stuff?
No.
On the USDA side, when and if we make the decision to go down that path, there's gonna be a lot more involvement on your end just helping us. Because we have to upload financials and balance sheets for general fund and utility fund and a bunch of other things and they have to be within sixty days of current. Again, SRF isn't near as involved. We really gotta make sure that the P E R tells the story. And then, um, one of the big things they'll look at is if, if, if you don't get any help, meaning, um, they don't use the term grant, they use loan forgiveness. If you don't get any loan forgiveness assistance and or zero interest loan consideration, this is what our post-project user rate is gonna be and it could be bad. And we use that as leverage to say, we need your help and we need some subsidization, subsidization here assistance. The other thing that we'll need to decide is if, if you recall when we wrote that report, we did the holistic deep dive into everything. And we said if, if we could fix everything, this is what it's gonna cost. So we'll wanna sit down and decide if we're gonna pursue this project, you know, how big of a piece do we wanna carve out? Do we wanna shoot, go for the moon? Do we wanna carve out, we know we, we need to address the issues at the water plant. He's got pumps that need to be replaced. Now we're knocking out meters. We're getting the wells up to, up to snuff and doing some miscellaneous stuff out in the system with the Okra project, but there's also some line work that we're not doing now that needs to be addressed and some other things. You know, but we'll, we'll wanna land on a finalized scope for as far as the funding applications go.
One thing I also wanted to remind everybody, and Thomas is the one that, um, helped come up with that. Because Wayne County had talked about, and I, I have not got anything in writing yet, that they, the thirty thousand that they loaned us for doing the P E R, they would forgive that as long as we put that towards this project. So that is funding that we can use towards this asset plan. So it's not additional money. It's money that we had already put towards this plan that, or this project that we could use for this.
Is it thirty or forty?
Uh, our portion was thirty. So that, that kinda, that helps. So just to let you guys remember that.
Out to the plant, uh, we, we're talking about doing some, uh, well pumps. Are you replacing well pumps or are you just gonna re?
Yes. Under the, under the scope of the Okra project, you're getting new well pumps and we're cleaning both wells.
Okay. And we can use that for the next project too that
Well, once we do it as a part of the Okra project, we can cross it off the list from
Okay. I mean, it's not like a waste of money to put all here and it
We were gonna do it whether we did it now or we did it as part of a bigger project.
Okay.
So doing it now, just
Right.
We don't have to do it as a part of an SRF or USDA project.
Not being a guy that knows much about the water, we'll say infrastructure per se, but it, is there a way of testing that actually our aquifers are doing a well? I mean, I know a lot of ponds around here talking about how they're drying up and I just wonder if there's some way of testing to see if ours, the water is still good?
We could get a hydrogeologist involved. Um, are you guys, is, is Peerless your, is that who you use or?
Bastin Logan.
Bastin Logan does the wells?
We just did a drawdown.
Okay.
Which means what?
Which means it, it, it tells how, so the amount of water that you're pulling and how far down the water level drops before it has to build back up whenever the pump shuts off. So and they said everything was good in that aspect of it because I did ask them about that because I was concerned about well too.
So basically you're in good shape as far as available supply goes.
Okay. That's basically what I'm asking. So I hate to put new pumps in a spot that they're gonna have to be moved.
Right.
So.
No, you're in good shape.
And I don't know if you mentioned this earlier or not. Um, I spoke with Mike, the, he's the grant administrator that's working on the Okra side of it.
Ethan was here the last month, right?
Yes. Um, we had talked about part of the, um, scope that we put in that was, um, the security system and the G I S system. And, um, he was called, contacted Friday saying that Okra would not fund those. So that's where we were swapping out, putting that back.
What he said and the timing works out with some things that need to be addressed at the water plant. Upgrading his, his controls, his SCADA, his moni, his alarm monitoring, his communication between the tower and the wells and the water plant is an eligible cost. So Mike was able to, um, basically shuffle the cameras and the mapping into whatever next project we do with RD or SRF and pull SCADA that would have been done under that into this current project. And that allows us to go ahead and set it up now so the backbone's in place when you build the new water plant. And either expand what we put in now or just, we're good. We got budget to just go ahead and get everything set and we'll reuse it. And we can cross it off the list of a big project.
Thinking kinda down the road, but would you see, like, say we get these multiple fundings coming in, would you see per se the same, we'll say onsite contractors being able to do the whole projects with just different amounts of income coming?
Yeah, you know, the, you're gonna have your mechanical contractors that are gonna specialize more in the plant work. You know, setting equipment, putting flange pipe together, running chemical lines. You're gonna have your distribution, you know, general excavation contractors that running water lines and, and putting in new services and setting meters is more in their wheelhouse. Occasionally you'll find one that can do both, but what I would envision, um, even on the Okra project, I would envision, um, the meters and the little bit of work we're doing out in the distribution system to be bid is like, we, I, I call it like division A, division B, division C. And having the well work being kind of a standalone because you'll get Bastin Logans or the Peerless Midwest or the Orpens of the world that, that's their wheelhouse. You're most likely gonna get the best pricing from them. So let's get that targeted scope out to those guys and then we'll let some other general excavating contractor deal with the customer meters and swapping out hydrants and valves and those types of things. No different on a bigger project, you know, we would bid the water plant work as a division A and let the, the Reynolds constructions or the, um, Theenamans or, or the RE Crosby's or the whatever, the big mechanical contractors out there. Let those guys, I'm using Table Marra down in Madison. Um, let those guys bid the plant work. And then, uh, whether it's like the Brackneys of the world or whoever does the line work and that's their wheelhouse, we'll, we'll structure that contract division accordingly. So that's our target audience when we go out to bid. Try to get, try to get, hit that sweet spot. Doesn't mean, and we won't preclude one from bidding multiple divisions. It just means that we're trying to spend your dollars as best and most efficient as we can. So if we target the plant guys and we target the well guys and we target the distribution system guys, we feel like it usually works out the best.
As far as, of course, I'm thinking way down the road on everything, but as far as I'm assuming particular Grant A or Grant B wants to have everything done by a certain time. So like I said, Grant A wants everything done by February of twenty twenty-six.
On the Okra side, yeah, they're historically, um, a little more aggressive with their schedules. And it's good that we're doing a standalone project with them. From a USDA and SRF side, once we close on our financing, depending on who's got a bigger skin in the game, we may each month draw both down at the same. If one's significantly higher than the other, we may go ahead and draw one of them down all the way and then shift our focus to the other one. Typically, um, if, when you get a, a, a project, whether it comes from one funding source or multiple funding sources that has a combination of loan and grant, they will make you, they being the people that are funding it will make you spend the loan money first. And then you, you're spending the grant money on the back end of the job. That's kinda their gotcha, but.
When this starts, do you guys have somebody that stays onsite?
We will have our
Keep pushing the project along.
I have, I have an in, in the Okra project, I have budgeted for somebody to be onsite when the contractor's onsite working. And the bigger project, we will also have somebody onsite. The funding agencies will require full-time inspection when the contractor's onsite working. We'll fill out daily reports, um, without getting into the weeds. It's, it's all cloud-based and accessible to anybody on this board that's interested in having access. You can read my inspector's daily reports. You can look at what some shop drawings have been submitted. You can see progress photographs, the whole nine yards.
That'd probably be nice. Keep Lenny in the loop on that stuff.
Absolutely. He'll have access to Absolutely, he'll have access to all that stuff. We'll have monthly onsite construction meetings with the contractor, and the town, and us, and the funding agencies. So that just keeps everybody on their toes. You know, a contractor, by contract, is going to be required to provide us with updated schedules each month when they submit a request to get paid. So there's a lot of information that will be available to you folks, not only on this first project, but as we transition into the next project, that, you know, I will inundate you with opportunity to immerse yourself in project information. You just tell me to stop, or how, how much you actually want to have access to.
And at that point, that'll be the question, whether we have, you know, a workshop just for that, you know, how, how intense it gets, so.
At a minimum, at a minimum, we'll have monthly onsite meetings. And they typically are scheduled, whatever meeting, like if the regular council meeting is the meeting that you're going to approve construction claims, like a payout from a contractor and my construction engineering bills, then we typically try to schedule the onsite meetings a day or two after all that stuff gets approved. That way, I can hand off the signed documents to the funding agency, so they can go process it and order the money. And then we can also then sit there, it's all fresh in everybody's minds, and if you're not happy about something, it's our forum to bark at them. You know, if they, they need to crack the whip on whoever, we can do it. It's a lot, I went through a lot, I jumped around a lot. I can keep coming back to meetings and.
I love optimism, that's what I'm excited about.
That's what I do, I've been doing it for a long time.
So, we'll find out something about the end of February, you think, for Okra?
I think that's when Mike said we'll be notified of award. And then procedurally, there's agreements, grant agreements that come out that need to be reviewed and executed before they release funds. Once funds are released, that's when we'll be out to bid, and be in a position to award a contractor and get rolling.
Ideally, for this next month?
Yes, that'd be fine, that gives me, that would give me sufficient time to get it done, coordinate with Baker Tilly, and get your S R F application ready to go by the end of March. And then I'll email, I'll draft up the, the Okra engineering contract, and I'll email it to Julie, and she can share it with your attorney, and get all that knocked out too.
Very good. Any other information or news or?
Congrats on, on being board members for twenty twenty four.
Absolutely, hope for good stuff this year.
Nice, what's the thing about the phone system at the wellhouse?
That's what we're going to talk, that's what he was talking about, that it come up lately, so instead of doing like the cameras and the fence and stuff, we're going to flip that and put that into the Okra grant.
Okay.
We call that the SCADA.
Yeah, it's communication is what it is.
Yeah.
So it's what the water tower tells the plant when to come on and off.
Okay.
And that was the issue we had when the Frontier Fun Line went down. We didn't get an informational call that, hey, you got a problem at the wellhouse, and then Lenny's scrambling.
So, Lenny mentioned Bastian Logan is coming out on Friday. I'd call him if, if you're interested.
He told me Wesler.
Wesler's coming.
I'm sorry, it's Wes, the engineers, from Carrville.
Well, good luck. The, if you got any questions after the fact, holler at us. I sent him an email earlier that kind of lays out some options for, for getting off the phone line, and maybe looking at cellular-based systems, or some other things that are available to you to look at and consider, so. There'll likely be questions, but he's got it, he can share it with you guys.
Good deal, got to be somewhere where we got.
It's pretty.
Dan, that type of bill out there is outrageous.
That's what I hear, it's pretty.
And unreliable.
Most people are, are like the cellular systems, but again, if you're in an area that you don't have good signal, it could be problematic. If you got internet access, that's another option, so you've, you've got things to consider.
I didn't realize that you offered that. I actually went on my clerk's side, and they responded back that way.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do all the instrumentation, control, and electrical design for all the projects that we're involved in. And then we have a preferred sub that we use for structural engineering, but all, all the electrical and instrumentation is done in-house. My chief designer used to work for Precision Controls, and one of my partners, vice president, used to be one of the owners of Toric Engineering. They're just another integrator, there's a bunch of them out there. There's Axum and Precision, and all kinds of integrators out there. That'll do the install, but we'll do all the design.
Very good, you got nothing else for Rob?
Nope, probably ready for me to stop talking.
I appreciate you coming, giving us optimism, and look forward to a good year ahead. Hopefully some water grants getting approved and.
Exciting. I'll be back then in February. And if you need anything beforehand, I will go ahead and start the, the monthly report process ahead of that meeting, that way we can kind of get into the flow of things.
That'd be great.
Appreciate it, is there anything else on the agenda you want me to stick around for?
Nothing I know of, no. Unless you want to approve Bob's contract.
He probably doesn't want me to do that.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Safe drive home.
Thank you.
See you, Rob. All right, it's time to confirm with the board if you like the meeting day and time, which is the second Tuesday of the month at seven P M. You want to have any issues with that?
Has it always been that for a long time, or?
For the most part, yeah. Sometimes it might be like six forty-five, or seven fifteen, if somebody had like a meeting before, but it's pretty much up to the board each year, that's kind of the standard.
I mean, I can do earlier, I wouldn't want it later. But otherwise, seven's fine.
I think we do seven for you, don't we?
No, not necessarily, because I, Cambridge does six, and so six would be fun.
I'd like six.
I thought, I, I thought somebody had, you said, somebody had something earlier and could pay me seven, but I don't think it was.
Yeah, it was, the people that were on here had jobs where they couldn't be here earlier. But if, if you guys want to start doing that, that's fine.
I like six, I mean, the other, you know, the summer I might work late, but it'd be a rare thing, but typically I skip lunch anyway, so.
Six would be fun.
Good for you, Lenny?
Yeah.
Good for you, Rex?
Yeah.
All right, let's do it, six on Tuesday then.
Okay, we'll change it to six P M, the second Tuesday of each month, at six P M here at the town hall.
Maybe in the winter time it won't be so dark.
Starting February.
Starting February, yes. And at present, we will not have a work session for January, is that correct?
My question, Bob, as far as those work sessions, do we need to advertise for those if nothing's getting voted on, even if the board all meets?
Yeah, if you're, yeah, anytime you meet, you have to notify, not necessarily in the legal publications, but post a notice that you're placing business, and notify the newspaper. Now, when you, if it's a regular schedule, like you don't have to do every month about your regular meeting. You just give them one at the first of the year, which I'm assuming you do. I would now give a notice at six o'clock, as the second Tuesday. And if you're planning on work sessions, if you just give them that one-time notice saying it's going to be every month, now if it's going to be kind of hit and miss, then you just need to notify them forty-eight hours before that meeting.
Well, that would be the issue, because the paper would not probably come out in time for that to happen, so.
You just have to notify.
They didn't have to be in their paper, they just have to know about it, so they have the opportunity.
So they can put it on their Facebook page, or whatever.
Or come.
Or be here.
Or be here.
Okay, so as long as we do a forty-eight hour notice, then we can, we're good, okay. But my personal plan is not to have them unless they're necessary. I don't want to have a workshop just to have a workshop, or we're trying to put something on the agenda to have it. If it's necessary, it's necessary, but I don't want to do it just because we've been doing it.
And I would think, for the most part, you know, like I know there are certain ones during budget seasons we will have to have, but we should know at our regular board meeting.
Right.
That gives me two weeks to let everybody know, I can put it on Reach Alert, and we can notify everybody.
And we would have the same sign that night as well, six o'clock?
Yeah, six okay with the camera girl.
I don't know if she's listening to us.
Can, will it work for you guys?
Maybe not for me personally, but.
Somebody can be here, okay.
Uh, maybe, I don't know. The second Tuesday of each month is kind of a busy one with Cambridge and Centerville and all the other ones, so.
Cambridge, I mean, it's on Monday.
Cambridge is Monday, yeah.
Yes, so. We sure have lawyers, so.
Milton, I think, is on Tuesday.
Yeah, it's not Cambridge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I was there last night.
I know, for me personally, maybe not, but I can.
Find out and, and have somebody reach out to me and let me know for sure.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, the next question is the commissioners, and those assigned to particular things. For the new folks, and I think Dan is familiar, but mostly for Bree. Basically, like the committee you would be on, it's just kind of something you keep your eye on more than the rest of us would. So like, say Cemetery would kind of be your position to drive through the cemetery once a week and make sure everything you think looks kosher as it should. Where, you know, I might be on water or something else, that's kind of what I want to concentrate on, so. It's not something that requires a major ordeal, but if you see something, you're kind of the one expected to say, hey, Lenny, let's fix this, or this is an issue, so.
We walk there all the time anyway, so.
So the question at the moment, this is how they're presented, so are you guys okay with them, or do you want to make any changes?
I'm good.
I'm good.
We go to the park lot and the cemetery lots, I figured those are great.
Yeah. All right, we need to get approval on those, and the meeting change time?
Yes.
All right, ask for a motion of meeting change time, and the committees?
I make a motion, we accept a new time and the meeting, and for the commissioners of what's been presented.
Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, just for the folks listening at home, for the lights, that's Gene Gabbert and Rex Snyder. On water would be Nathan Alrick and Rex Snyder. The park would be Bree Pitcock and Dan Wicker. Cemetery would be Bree Pitcock and Dan Wicker. The streets would be Gene Gabbert and Nathan Alrick. Nathan Alrick would be the representative for the Indiana Municipal Power Agency. Rex Snyder would be the, um, do you say the abbreviation, or is there words for that?
There's words, but I don't know what they are right now.
I E R P C.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's a regional.
Eastern Indiana Regional something.
Planning Commission.
But, yeah.
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 Yeah, there we go.
That's what Rex does, so. Uh, the E M P meets once a month typically, it's kind of varies a little bit around the holiday season, so when do you guys normally meet?
About every three months they, they meet.
So kind of quarterly?
Yeah.
And just to let you know, like, like Nathan said, focus on those areas. It doesn't mean you have to check everything out in the entire town, but if you happen to see a street light out, or you happen to see something else, you can either reach out to that person, or you can still reach out to Lenny or I. It's just those, it's just easier when we have certain people that can focus on specific things. But you, you can still, if you have other concerns, you can still.
And make sure and call any after-hours and just harass them all evening long.
He'll quit coming over, I'm like, oh, by the way.
All right, Big D's good, Commonwealth is good, Home Systems is good. Okay, we're ready to approve the minutes from last month.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes and adjustments as presented.
Okay, I will second that. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes to approve the minutes. Police is good, fire's good, what do you got under building permit, anything, sir?
Nothing.
Okay. Do you know if there's going to be a requirement for the Schroeder House to get a building permit? Do you know what's going on in there yet?
I don't know what's going on, as long as he's, I mean, just depends on what they do to the outside, so.
We have trucks and trailers pulled in right now, so.
I received a phone call today, the alert from the electrician, and wanted to know if he had to have a license fee or a permit for that. And I told him no, I gave him your information, in case he had questions or anything, that he could reach out to you.
Okay.
Haven't talked to an owner, so I don't think, I haven't. Is it a fix and flip, or do you know?
He's not sure what he's going to do with it yet.
Who is it?
Last name of King, Aldis.
Yeah.
We could have Newcastle, wouldn't we?
Think so, yeah.
I buy Newcastle, between Hagerstown and Newcastle. I would say it's a fix and flip, but that's just my opinion.
Building permits, can we, how we up to charge? Right now, fifteen dollar permit, how can we, you know, say we want to make a thirty dollars a permit, try to?
You guys just need to go over my different permits.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we need to increase it, so we can build some money up, so we can get our books updated.
Well, that, and it wouldn't hurt to, to include electric and, you know, I mean, you don't want to, you know, fee everybody to depth, but, because I know there are other communities that, that, you know, you have to have a permit for everything, but especially when we have a lot of rentals, that's not a bad idea, in my book.
Is that on the agenda next month?
Sure will.
It'd be a good thing to, yeah.
Is that list in the ordinance book you gave me?
Um, the fee, I don't know if it is or not, I think it is.
Okay, I can look it up.
We've had those for a long time.
Lenny, do you feel good with the building commissioner position? Do you feel like you need any more training, or certain training on certain things, as far as code enforcement?
I just, I mean, I'm, I think you know pretty well, just, my main thing is, I mean, I call Jeff, you know, he, he pretty much, he helps me out quite a bit, so.
And any trainings coming up you want to go to, shoot that to us, because I'm all for training, so.
Most of that is an actual cert, it's more schooling.
Yeah.
So he's kind of put that on the back for now.
Yeah, because we've got.
Everything keeps coming up.
Everything's coming up, they want you to, they want, they want you certified in this, and now, you know, eight-one-one, you've got to go take a class on that, and it's just on and on and on and on, and I don't know how they ever expect you to get any work done.
Certification now, too.
You know that?
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, in the big cities, the superintendent, that's all they do, is go to classes all day, sit at my desk all day, or, you don't have that luxury.
I don't have that time.
No, so, we just do the best with what we got.
That's right.
All right, so let's talk about your trash pump you've got on the agenda.
So I get me three here. The one that I recommend is the one from USA Blue Book. It's got a bigger, it's got a bigger engine, pumps more, and it's, I mean, prices are.
Actually cheaper.
Cheaper, yeah, I think it's cheaper, isn't it?
Yeah, fifteen ninety-nine.
Yeah, and the other two, one sixteen forty-eight, one sixteen forty-nine, so.
And tell us about your existing pump, for those that are new to the board.
Um, we had loaned our pump to Cambridge City, which is nothing uncommon. You know, we like to help their, help each other out. And it blew up, the pump was, I think it was forty years old, Rex, am I correct in that? Pump was forty years old, and, you know, it blew up, the impeller had cracked on it, you can't get an impeller to fix it, the motor itself was junk, I mean, it's just time to, time to.
Upgrade.
Upgrade and move on to getting a better pump. One that will work.
Well, and I know it's been discussed before, and we talked about needing one that's heavy duty. There is a difference between a contractor's heavy duty and a municipal water company's heavy duty. You know, what, what a contractor would need, where he uses it quite often every day, where a, you know, these guys, they're going to have thousands of gallons of water going through it at one point in time. May not use it very often, but hundreds of thousands of gallons of water could be going through that and being pumped out at one given time. And so, making sure heavy duty means municipal heavy duty, and not just.
And also the, the amount of, I mean, you know, trash pumps come trash pump for a reason, because of debris, you know, they do pump debris out, and, you know, some of these other pumps, they just, they just can't handle that stuff, you know?
Question for you, sir, was there any, I'm not seeing it here, but maybe you did, was there any type of a warranty that come with them?
Um, I'm assuming it's probably just a manufacturer's warranty, and.
You have more information than what we're seeing?
No, I don't.
I'm glad they called us, it's a great engine, I have no doubt about that, but.
Well, the last one lasted forty years, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, this one won't, because they don't make stuff to last.
No, they don't.
You're right.
So we'll be lucky to hope for ten.
Yeah.
So the price on that is one thousand five hundred and ninety-nine. And Julie, which account would that come out of? So we can show the board what that money looks like? So we can show the board what that money looks like?
It would come out of, um, water. We could probably work with water and streets, because I mean, it's technically, even though it's water lines, it's within the streets. So we might be able to to do that, depending on how our, um.
Where it's at, certainly.
Where it's at and and the funding. But it would come out, biggest part, I would say it would come out of water.
So this here is what's in the total accounts if you look at the fund report, Bree?
And if you look on the back page, the bottom four would be your water fund. Operating and or depreciation, um, would be the two that you would use for something of that.
Do you need the, uh, the wheel kit to come with it, or just roll cage?
We can handle it this way it is. We can make our own wheel kit.
Maybe use one of the old ones. Don't stick out the old ones.
They were young and strong.
Just give them a vacuum truck, and it wouldn't make any difference.
True.
You got a budget, that's scary, you just like reach down there and get some of that moldy stuff in the oven. Because if you take a wish, that's honestly, that'll just hook you up.
While you're still on his report, I pulled up your building code, and it's interesting, you guys adopt by reference the state, um, plumbing codes, electrical codes, mechanical codes, swimming pool codes, fire codes, and then you talk about that a building permit is required, and then any other permits this council may want to do. And then it says the fee for those will be as herein after set forth, and there's nothing here and after set forth. And so right now, it's unclear what permits you really, a person needs to get. And clearly, it's unclear about any, what fee they have to pay. So you need to think about, when do you want somebody to get a permit, and how much you want to charge them for it?
Updated the fee schedule, it must not be, they must not have put it in here, but we did update.
You do have one?
We do have a fee schedule for building permits, yes.
Oh, I gotta say that.
Yeah.
Is, and then for any subcategories too, I mean, as far as electrical, plumbing, or anything?
No.
No, we never.
Yeah, it's like a standard permit was fifteen dollars, but now it's a apartment house going up, just our business, it might be a little more in that way.
Depending on the number of inspections.
Yeah.
So then, what, I mean, I didn't know, is there something you want me to have ready for next month, or are you guys just going to talk about it?
Let's talk about it, see what you do deal with.
Why don't you pass, have those ready to pass out to everybody and get me a copy of what what it is right now, and then we can talk and see what changes you want to make.
We'll have Julie see if she can find the fee schedule.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, pass that out.
Um, what other fees are you guys wanting to consider?
The golf cart tags.
Yes.
Get that.
Yes. Um.
Now that may be someplace else, I'm just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But building, I think, you know, as far as the building itself, uh, roofs, electrical, that might be all we need to go.
Usually with electrical, it's anytime you pull a meter is when they require a permit in my line of work.
Okay. And that would be something, would that be your inspection, or would that be MPA inspection? I think they do the inspection now, don't they?
Well, they do the.
Reconnect.
They do the reconnection, they do that, but as far as the other, I'm usually the one that does the inspection on those.
We should be the one inspecting it. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because they just, um, the only one that they was concerned with was the solar.
Well, I know when, um, Mr. Cool had the work done there, then the electrician came in and they did the inspection, I know you were with them, but they did the inspection for that, so that's why I wasn't sure.
Yeah, yeah, I think, um, that was.
Just in case their fee is different than ours, I just want to make sure.
Check with them.
Okay.
So I didn't really know, but, yeah, I think we just.
Okay.
They they just always told me, well, you have to look it over, if you're good with it, we're good with it, no coming, no cut, you know, I have to, I have to be the one to tell them to hook it up, you know, they can't. They're not going to just come because the customer calls.
Right.
If they have fees for anything that we need to include in this fee schedule, we need to know that.
Okay.
Okay, I'll get that ready. So basically, building, electric, roof?
Yeah, just kind of base it right now.
There's some communities that do the fence.
I don't know why.
We include fence in our building.
Yeah, one doesn't over six feet.
Yeah.
Yeah. In our building, I don't, we don't have to have a permit for it.
Unless it's over six feet.
Unless it's over six feet.
So the permit shall be obtained before beginning construction, operation, or repair of any building or structure, the cost of which exceeds five hundred dollars.
Yeah, so anything over five hundred dollars needs a permit.
Right, so I guess.
And structure of what the fence is structured.
Well.
Well, we do.
Schroeder property probably be over five hundred bucks.
Yeah, and we also do pools, just simply because we had.
Oh, and they put it along the park.
They're putting, they're putting pools underneath an electric line, you know, they, so whether we actually charge a fee for it or not, we still send, um, Lenny out to make sure that they can put it where they want to put it, so.
All right, Bree, you feel good about the funds, how you understand them, okay?
Yep, I do.
Do you guys want to make a motion to purchase this fifteen ninety-nine pump?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, sir. Uh, if you can, uh, check next month or two, bring back to us a quote. Uh, I know T and M does tree trimming, and the other tree trimmers you might know, I'd like to see about cutting down the tree next to the firehouse. It is in pitiful, pitiful shape, and it creates a disaster for the mowing crew, and I'm afraid it's going to fall on the firehouse one of these days, but it just makes a mess in the gutters, and.
Yeah.
So I would like to see us look at, get some quotes on that, talk about that next couple of months before it gets, uh, super hot.
Okay. One other thing I had, and it just came to me, or it would have been on the agenda, but, um, I M P A called me just a little bit ago, and they are doing their truck inspections.
Oh, right, with buggy trucks?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they're doing it here in Spice Island, so we'll be able to go to that to get that done. I just wanted to let the council know.
Okay.
When, you know?
The seventh of February.
So you'll be out of service that day, as far as the truck goes for a short time anyway, but, and is that a cost, or is it free?
It is a cost, um, he hasn't given me a cost yet, I'll have to get that from him. I know whenever we was looking before, it was, what was it? I can't remember, it was about, it wasn't, it wasn't cheap.
It's not cheap, I know, but.
No, I don't remember.
Surely if we're doing a group of them, it'd be a little bit.
Well, that's, and that's the reason for us to have them to come up here and do it just for us.
Yeah.
It was going to be like, I think it was like nineteen hundred dollars or something stupid, and you know, and but if they were doing others, then it would be like four hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
So, you know, but that was two years ago.
Let's make sure we don't call it sick that day.
Yeah, no kidding, yeah.
All right, anything else for Mr. Lenny? Good job on plowing some snow this weekend, hopefully that's the last time you have to plow snow.
I hope so.
Till the upcoming weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so you're good on the salt, sand mix, we got plenty on hand?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to probably order another load of, uh.
Did you guys have to put some down this weekend?
County mix? No, I'm probably going to order another load of county mix, because we use it for our, um, putting around our water lines and stuff too, just to utilize it, but. Yeah, we have plenty of salt, we already got our, should get a salt this year, and we should be good.
Um, any upcoming issues we need to know about this upcoming year?
As far as.
We're not scared at the last minute, you say, oh, I should have thought about that a long time ago.
No, uh, just, just need to keep in the back of our minds about a mower, so I know that's going to be coming up.
Replacing one or adding one?
Replacing one.
Cut. So we got two right now, is that correct?
Well, we have three.
Three?
Yeah, yeah, we have three, but.
Cut.
One of them's a tractor, and we use it for spraying, and it, and it still mows.
Welcome to bring any quotes and, you know, talk with dealerships about trainings and everything, so just present that when you're ready.
Okay.
Just don't wait till the last minute, say, oh, the engine blew up, now we better buy a mower tomorrow, so Julie might get nervous.
I think she gets nervous no matter what, every time I talk, she gets nervous.
All right, anything else for Lenny? We're going to turn the show over to Julie.
Goodie, goodie. Uh, you should have your, um, fuel report. Oh, that was the other thing.
The other thing.
Go for it.
It just. So, we're paying for them to deliver fuel to us, right, no?
There is no delivery charge, I went back and looked.
Okay, but we're paying pump price.
Yeah.
It's basically, we're, we're not getting a discount or anything out there, and it's becoming a headache, it's becoming a hassle, we ran out of fuel this weekend. Um, I.
You got to call them to get fuel, or they automatically deliver?
They were supposed to automatically, I've told them three times.
They might have quit this.
When he quit, that's when he quit.
Three times that I've called, I told them they need to come and check that and bring fuel to us, and just stay on it, but they haven't. Um, so, uh, I am, I am entertaining the idea that we need to do something different, you know, I mean, we have a fuel station right here in town, his prices always seem to be pretty reasonable.
Marathon too, so just give them a marathon card.
Like we used to have the fleet card.
So however, that price is up there, figured.
At the. Here?
Yeah.
Whatever, what, so whatever, if I order a hundred and fifty gallons, I'm paying whatever the price of gas is.
That day.
That day.
If it goes down tomorrow, you're still paying the same as you did yesterday.
Yes.
And that's how many gallons?
Uh, we go through about a hundred and fifty every, maybe two months, month and a half.
About a month, month and a half.
Depending on mowing season, mowing season, we go through it quite often.
So you fill it up basically once a month?
Uh, once, probably once or twice, depending on how many times, you know, what all I have to do that month, if I've got to go, you know, take water samples to Monsey or.
Do you have any issues with that?
No, I don't think so, we've, we've been staying on top of that pretty good, I think we've, uh.
But that's other maintenance with this out here is, um, making sure that, you know, our gauges are good, that we don't have to replace the the gauges and and the guts and everything out here, to make sure it stays secure.
Sure.
Or is if we get a fleet card, which we, for everybody, we used to have one, we had one when we have the trash truck.
Yeah.
So.
And it's nice that they're open twenty-four hours a day now.
Yeah.
So for your late night calls.
Yeah, and that's, and you know, that's what we ran into this weekend, you know, pulled up out there to get fuel, and surprise, you don't have no fuel, and.
Will that, will you do the same thing with diesel as well on the seminar?
I think we could stay with diesel, because it's, because it's off-road fuel.
Okay.
So it's, it's going to run cheaper, you can't buy off-road fuel here.
Okay.
Um, so I would say we just stay with them on the off-road fuel, and then go with these guys and get a card over here, I guess. You know, that would be, that's my recommendation, you know, so, I mean, it's.
I would think you want a card no matter what, and just because, like you said, this weekend. Well, we have a a credit card. But anytime that's used, that has to be returned to the office and locked up, so it's, they don't keep it on hand. If they have a fuel card, they can keep the fuel card on them.
Right, so then it ran out this weekend, they're trying to plow. They have that card in the, in that truck to go to the gas station, so whether you decide to abandon that tank or not, I think getting the card.
Or if they're traveling the distance for a meeting or whatever, we get to Indianapolis and realize we're out of gas, then they can get back home. I mean, I like the idea of it.
I do too.
I think it's easier if we keep track of two, that way, or.
You, you could do the same things like we do at our station, each vehicle's got a card, and, uh, yeah, each got a passcode.
And I'm how your system worked previously with your fleet card, but like with ours next door, it actually figures all the taxes and everything out of it, so it's, uh, it's actually Voyager fleet to ease.
Yeah, because see, we still pay all of our taxes over here, where when we had the fleet card, we got some discount that way.
So that's better in the long run, of course. All right, you need a motion? Everybody calling off the motion would be?
Make a motion, we go to a marathon.
Fleet card. Second?
Second, a fleet card?
I'll figure it out.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Um, we didn't, uh, with the fleet card, there is no maximum, minimum.
Yeah, I think there is in there.
I can set it up online, so I can log into my computer, and I can pick five hundred bucks for this person, or I can pick a thousand for this person. I can check how many times a day they're allowed to use it, so it's.
Okay.
As far as the one I use, it's really user friendly.
Okay.
It's Voyager fleet.
I mean, we never.
No, before.
We never needed to do that, because we only used it for the trash truck, but do we need to, are are you guys going to, our regular cards have a maximum. So I need.
I would, I would think you would want to lock it at some point, because you know, if it got stolen or whatever, but like with ours, I mean, we got to put a PIN number in, each person has a PIN.
Yes, yes, we put a mileage in.
And I can tell if they paid inside, I can tell if they paid outside.
Everything down whenever we.
Well, when we got there, the person has to have, he's got his own PIN number, that way you know who used the card.
Mm-hmm, well, we had, our cards was one, two, three, and four, and I assigned each, each person had one. He had one, he had two, he had three, so it was assigned to each person.
You have to file it in those two, my correct on that.
Yes.
Which is a new thing, yeah.
That's, and I can even pick on the card if you're allowed to get gas with it or diesel with it, I mean, it's not picky, so.
You want to put a two hundred per gallon limit on it, or is it for the month, or is it?
I'd say whatever you think is reasonable.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
I mean, we're, we're going through, out there, we're going through with everything, we're probably going through a hundred, anywhere from a hundred to two hundred gallons a month. You know, when mowing season's in, so.
That's two hundred gallons, so that's.
And depending on what gas is, I mean, two hundred fifty may not be enough.
That might be enough, yeah.
You can change it as it goes on, I'm sure, and we can leave you that responsibility.
Oh, goodie. So.
As long as it's not being abused, it shouldn't even be an issue, that's.
Well, you got a truck now, or the person is doing it.
Well, you have, that's, that's, that's what's going to make it great about having a mileage.
Right.
Because you got mileage for filling up this time, and you come back and you got mileage for filling up this time. It should, it should coincide with the same truck.
Yeah, because we do that with, they, they have to give me tickets now, and so it, it, it tells me, and it, it kind of, it, I can get a flag if it's, you know, if, if we're only got ten gallons, and instead of, you know, a hundred and fifty gallons, or vice versa.
Fire department doing.
Yeah, we don't use paper trail, because it's all online.
But with the town, if you want, you have to send a receipt back with them every time, that'd be, whatever, you would feel comfortable with.
Um, I probably will still need.
A receipt.
A receipt.
Uh, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And unless, until State Board of Accounts tells me different.
Okay.
We'll, we'll keep a receipt.
I guess a lot of it depends on who your provider is and what they provide, so.
Well, like I say, since they are out of marathon over there, we can, you know, can't get a marathon card. Yeah, see, the Voyager, they can use it, if they're going on a trip, they can use it anywhere. It's just, you know.
Yeah, in the gas station in the country.
Yeah.
All right, we'll let Julie research that.
Okay, I'll research.
Find the best deal for the best bang in the buck and hold on yours.
Okay.
It's easy for her, that's what we want to do, because.
Yeah, my brain didn't get no.
Don't make things rough on you.
She's getting older, honestly, she's, we can't push her.
I mean, I already had to call her this weekend to kind of give me a card so I could get fuel, so.
Just lucky I was still in town.
I know, right.
Is that all for you, ma'am?
Oh, no, I'm just starting.
All right, here we go.
Yeah, um, in your regular packet. I gotta get your stuff up here, I got this up here, you need to sign this, because we've already approved that. Okay, local government resources contract, we have two contracts we had discussed at a previous meeting, um, because, um, State Board of Accounts and that are starting to require more than governments require more things, where we have to have a, um, capital asset plan. I do keep an inventory, um, but they're wanting to start making sure that we have everything inventoried, what needs to be inventoried, inventoried and, um, depreciated. Um, Mike Crowley, Crowley. Um, we had talked about, um, the local government resources, which Mike actually works with them. He used to be an employee of State Board of Accounts and he went on his own. So he has a lot of, uh, resources that he could help us with. Uh, but his main thing is the, um, capital asset plan, getting us started with that, helping us, uh, make sure what we need and, um, putting us together how to, uh, depreciate and putting the plan together for us. So, this is his contract. I did send you these. Oh, I thought I did, here you go. Um, this is a hundred dollars an hour. Uh, he said he didn't see, we can do, on both of these, we can do everything online, should have no need to come in-house. Um, I can send him all the stuff that he needs to be able to do that, he felt like he would be able to have that done before, um, I have to turn in my, uh, annual report so that my new capital asset plan can be included in that. Um, so.
So this is how often, once a year?
No, he should only have to do this once to get me started and then I can take it over it, yes. The other contract, this one, the local government resource one, um, she is working on, um, all of my other reports and funds and stuff, checking our internal controls, making sure we're doing that stuff right. And having everything prepared for our next audit because this will have to be a federal audit. And, um, I've never had to go through one of those, but we have to have this in place in order to get our funding for the grant that we're working on, so, um, that is the, her, um, strong points of helping us get everything ready to make sure that we're prepared for that and we don't get put back on our-
Just something new, have you done this in the past?
This, I've not had to do this before, these are changes that are going in place, but this is also, like I said, I've never had to do a federal audit before and, um, making sure that I've got everything up to par and the way it's supposed to be for that, so that they don't kick back something because if my audit doesn't come back right, then that throws off my bonding issue and stuff for that, so I wanna make sure that we've got everything the way it's supposed to be. And both of them have said that when we move forward with, that goes with that.
Where does this one go?
This one?
There's a number of pages on that.
This, this is it right here, this is one, this is two.
What's this guy?
Uh, that is another one that we have to talk about.
All right, that's later.
Yeah, that's later.
All right.
I got, I got lots of stuff, I told you. Um, now you made me forget what I was talking about.
Well, the reason I'm questioning, I mean, is there any other companies that does this or were these reliable companies to, to do it, I just don't wanna-
These are, this company was recommended through my State Board of Accounts, um, training that I got, they're, they were recommended on there.
Okay, that's fine, that's, I'll get you with somebody to call you, you gotta do this.
No, 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 no.
Somebody else, you people, like just-
Um, and that's where this came, a lot of this came from, is when I went through my training with DLGF and State Board of Accounts and, um, getting prepared for everything, they're saying they're, you know, in, in the past, we've been very fortunate because a lot of the stuff that comes down, it comes down to the bigger communities and they've kinda let the little guy-
Oh, yeah.
Just like the depreciation, I knew that was coming, that's been coming for probably five or six years, but they've let us, we haven't had to do it and now they're going, nope, you're not gonna get by with it anymore, now you've gotta-
Right.
You've gotta start doing it, so, um, and like I said, they all have, um, Suzie Bass and, and those, um, they are previous clerks that have thirty, forty years of experience. Um, so they, and then they went out to do this and he used to work for State Board of Accounts, so there's a lot of knowledge there that can help. Um, and even just answering questions if we have questions, especially, cause I told, uh, Mike that we were gonna be doing this bond grant with a SRF and all that stuff, and he says, any questions you have, feel free to give me a call, even if we're done working on this.
Really?
So.
So, plain English, what's the difference between this and this?
Well, he actually works for them.
Okay.
But they're doing the financial side more so and he's, this one, he is just doing the capital asset. And going through his private company instead of being a part of hers, he's cheaper than she is. So that's-
Can you do both of these?
Hmm, so I need both of these.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One seems to be more ongoing, the other one is just like for a specific event, is that correct?
His is, his is just a specific event, yeah.
On the hundred.
Yes.
And this doesn't even have a yearly term, it says it's like forever, and with automatic ten percent increases on that hourly rate every year.
If you use it for anything.
You're saying it only uses it once.
I wouldn't think, yeah, I wouldn't think I would need it, so basically if I, if I have questions, if I have a big thing where I need to have them come in and do something, then you guys would say, yes, come and, and we wouldn't have to go through this anymore.
And this is so you can do the federal audit?
This is, yes.
Okay. And that only happens once every twenty, thirty years, apparently?
If you have over, what is it, five hundred thousand dollars in federal money, you have to do a federal audit. But because we are doing bonding, basically, we're gonna be doing a bond, um, for this USDA stuff. I've never done one of those before, I have to have one for that.
Gotcha.
So you want us to approve these vendors?
Yes.
For when you need that?
Yes, please. And I don't wanna ever have to go through a federal audit ever again.
All right, you want them both at the same time, is that kosher?
Uh, better do them separate, please.
All right, so item A is local government services.
It's actually with the, contract is with the vendors, Local Government Resources LLC, so it would be to approve a contract with Local Government Resources LLC.
Is there anything that caught your eye, Bob?
Uh, no, other than that, ongoing, it says you can terminate any time with thirty days' notice. Um, but as long as you know that that, that hundred and fifty hourly rate goes up automatically ten percent every year. But again, if you don't use them, then you don't use them, so.
Why do they change their name?
Yeah, cause there is part of it where they're-
Yeah.
Local Government Services and then there's other section where it's, maybe the Local Government Services is one and then, then they changed it.
I just noticed the title of it, it's in the first paragraph, isn't it?
No, I think their contract's wrong.
Local Government Resources LLC and then it says Local Government Services LLC. So, the title of the contract is one thing with them and then in the body of it, let's see how they make their signature. Yeah, their signature block is Local Government Services LLC, you're right. So I, I think the title is, is wrong at the top.
You want me to have them correct that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's know who we're dealing with.
Yeah.
Okay. Correct title.
How quick do you need this?
Um, well, I would like to have them start before so that I can-
I mean, do you want us to approve it pending that you are kosher with their answer of changing?
They can get started and get stuff done, hopefully before my, um, I have to turn in my stuff in March.
So you'll get a corrected contract to set up a contract?
So this would get them started. I would get a corrected.
Yeah, I would guess, the only thing that's wrong is just the very top line, cause everything else where they talk about LGS would go with Local Government Services LLC, that's how they have signed it on their signature block, Suzie Bass from Local Government Services LLC. So I think it's just that one word at the very top line.
Okay. Okay.
All right, motion to approve, Julie getting that correction taken care of and her feeling safe with the answer that's given. I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'll take right.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed?
And when you sign that, I would put in above the town of Dublin by sign, so you're not pushing right forward.
Oh, yeah, please.
All right, well, we've had a chance to look at the next one. Financial assistance and related training.
Yeah, seems very-
Clarity Capital Consulting. It's pretty small and short and easy.
You're okay with him being performed remotely, so he's not here as far as helping you?
And they were going, they're undoing, able to do stuff remotely with them as well. That, um, I do that with my audits and everything unless they actually have to come in because it saves on, um, mileage. If someone, you know, hotel and all that kinda stuff, so.
Do they give you an idea of how many hours expected, I mean, is this gonna be ten hours, twenty hours?
I won't know until I send them my stuff and have them look over. His shouldn't be, um, he said it shouldn't be that much because I already have, um, a, um, asset book started. It has most everything I need in it, but he said he would go back over, I think, three years or five years and check everything to make sure that I have everything on there and then take out stuff because we did do a new, um, policy last year um, and raised our limit of what's considered, um, an asset and what's just a normal, um, a normal cost, like lawn mowers and things like that, so I don't think it should be too many hours.
You don't, you don't have to come here at all?
No.
So, the, the hotel and mileage is gonna all can be wiped off.
Right, he did, that's just a standard contract with him, he said.
Any questions from the board? All right, motion to approve that contract with Mike Crowley and the, uh, Clarity Capital Consulting LLC.
Motion.
Second. All in favor, right?
Aye.
And opposed? Passes.
Please sign this one.
Uh, one that's not on your agenda, um, that I received was, um, our Empa Service Corp contract.
Oh, gosh.
That, um, is going up five dollars from last year per meter. Um, our maintenance was a hundred and seventy per meter, so it went up to a hundred and seventy-five per meter, thirty dollars per meter. Uh, for materials, that's the same as what it was last year, they give us credit of twenty dollars per meter because we read and do turn ons and shut offs. Uh, so the total that they charge us each month is a hundred and eighty-five dollars, uh, per meter. That's the, I think we paid sixty-nine hundred last year, so it'll be a little bit more than that for this year. Still have the same number of meters.
Any questions about that?
No.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve the five dollar meter increase.
All second. All in favor, right?
Aye.
And opposed? Passes.
That's yours. Okay. As a part of the OCRE grant, and we would have to do that with, um, our SRF grant as well, we have to have a fair housing ordinance in place, which we do, but it's from nineteen ninety-six or ninety-three. So, um, this is an upgrade to current, this is actually a template from OCRE um, that they use, I did send you one of these. Yesterday.
I, I don't, I, I looked even, when I was looking for your agenda and I could not find any emails, I don't know if your emails are going into my trash or-
But, yeah, cause I mean, I, I even made changes to this one, cause I wanted you to make sure that I, cause I included, what they gave me included the, their Housing and Community Development Act of seventy-four is amendment, the Indiana Code is amended. And I also put our Dublin Ordinance nine dash nineteen ninety-three dated October twelfth, ninety-three is amended, so I wanted to put that in there. Other than that, I didn't change anything from what this is. Guess I'm gonna have to see where your stuff is going. I know there are some stuff, um, we're still working on the, um, finishing up stuff with, um, Indiana Office of Technology to get switched over to a IN.gov email address. So I'm hoping this month we'll have that done so that Ryan can, um, get our website up and get us new emails that work because it kicks back any Gmail account, um, Hotmail account, AT&amp;T account, Yahoo account. So I have to go into our Google account in order to send emails to certain people.
I heard rumor about that, I don't know if you know anything about it, but I heard that when you sign onto that, you have to go with their internet provider and you can't get like, who is, it has to be somebody that they tell you you're gonna get.
Um, this, if, you can use your own or you can use the, the Google Workspace, um, we have to use the Google Workspace because what we have now through our is GoDaddy. It's not your internet service.
Provider, like you couldn't buy it from AT&amp;T, you had to get it from their particular vendors.
No. The only requirement that they had was if, uh, my current, um, website provider, which is, is my website provider, GoDaddy is the one that's causing my emails to kick back. Um, so I, I'm going through Google Workspace, but other than that, there's not change in anything.
Like I say, it was a rumor, so.
I felt one thing that I would recommend changing on this because of unclar, it refers to a number of places of who the powers shall be vested in the chief elected official of the town of Dublin, it's repeated about four or five times. Who is your chief elected official? That could, some people could say, well, clerk treasurer is your chief elected official. It would also be your, your town executive is the president of your town board is the executive branch of your town. The full town council is the legislative branch of the town council. And so consequently, the term chief elected official is not clear, so I would-
But what about on the signature page where it has it listed as well, that name goes with it, would that clear it out?
Cause that, that shows chief elected official and then underneath it, name and title of chief elected official, and so we would have Nathan as town council president.
Yeah, he is your chief exec, but I guess I would, I think it's safer to, do you have this on word processing, so you could change the whole word? I would just go through and wherever it says chief elected official, say, um, you're the town executive, you're president of town council, which is your chief, which is your executive branch, your town executive. Cause I, I just think.
Okay.
Everybody good with that?
Yes. I can do that. I'm not watching this, cause the, the signature page is on a separate page.
Yes, motion to approve general ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one.
Second. All second. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion passes.
He thinks we're ready for you for now.
Okay. Well, my first additional old business is for the Schroeder estate, is in final form to close out that estate. I have provided, um, Julie with a check, the net proceeds from the sheriff's sale of nine thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty-six cents, which was paid, um, that was the ninety-five hundred dollar bid price, less two hundred forty-four dollars and fifty-four cents, I think. Um, that was for the sheriff's costs that they got to take out of bid first and then we got the balance of that. And then the estate is also ready to close, I passed out to you the full activity of the estate that showed that, that brought in through Julie's help as personal representative, a full amount of twenty-three thousand eight eighty-five and there were costs involved in the estate of eleven thousand two twenty-one. Consequently, there is money on hand right now to pay out from the estate, twelve thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty cents. It had always been my position that two, that we knew heirs were never gonna get anything because there were two claims that were filed in the estate. Ours for the town of Dublin and Wayne Bank filed a claim, as they were allowed to do, because they were foreclosing on his residence. It was always my position that ours was the only important claim, the only relevant claim, because we were a, I thought, a secured claim and took priority over all other claims based on the wording of the unsafe building law. The Wayne Bank attorney took the position that our preferred and secured status only applied to real estate owned by the decedent, not their personal property. Therefore, they were ready to make the argument to the judge that they were entitled to half, that since there were two claims filed, they were entitled to half of these remaining proceeds and we would get half. Well, I told them that that was not gonna happen, we were never gonna agree to that and I'd see them in court first. And so we talked about negotiating it and I think what finally got them is when I said, well, if you wanna go to court, and I would point out to all the citizens of Dublin that Wayne Bank was trying to take money out of your coffre, is that the publicity that you particularly wanted? And I would point out to all the citizens of Dublin that Wayne Bank was trying to take money out of your coffre, is that the publicity that you particularly wanted for Wayne Bank? And so, and I said, I just don't think you have the right position, I think ours is, so we've, we've negotiated, negotiated, got him down now. That they would agree to take two thousand and we take ten thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars, which I thought was a pretty good split. And I'm not sure we could fight it for any less than that if we did go to court. So there, the bank has approved this, it's now up to you guys on approving this split of the proceeds there. So the Dublin would still get ten thousand six sixty-three fifty and Wayne Bank would get two thousand of the two claims that were filed. So if that would be approved, then we can get the balance of that, so you'll get another check for ten thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty cents, subject to your approval.
So we're not writing the two thousand dollar check?
No, 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 it comes out, right now, it's in a trust account from the estate and it would just be how that money would paid out. I was trying to get you the full twelve thousand six sixty-three, but it looks like they'll void a court fight or have to give up two thousand of it, but. Now you would get the full ten thousand six sixty-three, our goal was always to get twenty thousand dollars out of all this, as you can see, we're just about eighty-one dollars short of that, so.
So just for the understanding, uh, the forty-three thousand one hundred and ten seventy-two is what it costed us?
That, that's what the judgment was about, that you, that it did not really cost you that because of, that also had a five thousand dollar fine in there. And it had attorney's fees that had already been paid, so it did not actually cost you, but your judgment against him was forty-three thousand one ten that we could have. Arguably, if he was more wealthy than he was when he died, we could have collected forty-three thousand one ten.
Yeah.
Instead, all we collected was nineteen thousand nine eighteen.
Eighteen. Everybody clear on that? I know this has been a long-going situation.
Where does that money go then?
It'll go back into the edit funds, which is where it was paid out of.
So I would just need a motion to approve this settlement of the claim money out of the Schroder estate.
I make a motion, do we, do Bob say?
Next one? Alright, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes to settle the Schroder estate. Thank you, Bob, once and for all.
One down, no one to go.
The next is my legal contract, there are two originals of it, it is identical to what I have done before with one exception. Um, I am now showing a hundred and forty dollars per hour compared to one twenty-five, and I would have two or three points to make on that. I noticed this is my twenty-fifth year being your attorney and it's just gone up from ninety dollars an hour to one forty, which isn't bad over twenty-five years. More importantly, our firm's current hourly rate is three hundred and twenty-five to private clients and to other municipalities ranges from two twenty-five to two fifty. Needless to say, I have always been kind to Dublin and had a soft spot because I've been cognizant of your limited funds. But my partner said, Bob, you've gotta get them a little closer to what the market rate is, so therefore, I got, I said, okay, fifteen dollars more an hour, one twenty-five to one forty. Which still puts you a hundred less than most all the other municipalities, so sorry, folks, that's the best I can do, but that's what I put in for this year's contract.
It is what it is, the inflation in the world is crazy, so I appreciate that.
And we appreciate your legal advice.
You guys wanna talk about this with Bob outside?
I can leave if you wanna talk about me.
I'm fine.
I'll say, I have no problem.
Alright, when you get a chance to read over it, let me know if you're ready to make a motion, if not, we'll stand table for a few minutes.
And this is his, the same as last year's.
Oh. The dollar landscape.
I'll make a motion to go with the increase.
Second.
Okay, there's the motion, second on the floor, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes.
And if I could just have one, basically, sign both those contracts, Julie and people, and if I can have one back.
Sign, sign both, sign that one too.
Do, do you have an office in Cambridge?
I do, yeah, and I'm the one that's there primarily, so.
Danny, behind the antique mall, off Foot Street, yeah. Start at the bottom and go up, Danny. Start the new tattoo shop, this, the tattoo shop.
Okay.
Foot Street, twenty-seven?
Used to be Napa Auto Supply back in the day, prior to you were born.
Across the street, yeah.
Napa.
Yeah.
Cuz there's still some kind of pink store, pink store.
Yeah, that's the other building, I'm talking about the one that's covered tattoo shop.
Oh, yeah, there was an antique store and.
Used to be an Amish uh, sandwich shop for a while when the kids were in school, my kids were in school.
I'll look next time I.
How, you, you know how old my kids are.
Nathan Rex, I don't, can't read it, damn. I like it, it's very standard.
Well, one other thing I wanna say about ours contract too is I don't think it will affect any of your budgets. Because I think there was still even excess in your budget that was put back, that you didn't even use all of it, so I don't think that's gonna have any adverse effect on that. I try to keep the time to the minimum.
Alright, pull out the uh, mowing contract for you guys to look at, that's next on the agenda. Is that all you got, sir?
That is.
Alright, welcome back.
Thank you, happy to have your faith and give you another year, my silver anniversary, I guess.
Lenny, there's a little spot that we keep in here that says, if requested for five hundred dollars, we fill graves and grass, I wanna make sure Lenny and Nick do that. And we don't have to request him. So.
Yes.
And if that's a problem, call me and we'll get details worked out, but I don't wanna have to pay him five hundred dollars.
No.
Thank you.
And I have, I have um. The compost down here, I have access to all that that we need to put down there for, to help that, so. Um, I have taken care of that part of it too, so it will help that grass to grow, get man, quit growing on clay and.
I know it's one of the most frustrating things for families to go see their grave is sunk and obviously. Ground sinks, but if we can stay on top of it, that's the plan, so.
I like to see the town employees to pick up the, the spring cleanup and stuff, have them do that, Columbia, you know, used to go up and pick that stuff up, bag it. And do like that, you know, take two or three days worth, it takes to do it, yeah, I think the town employees can do that, save us two hundred fifty bucks that way. That's even after a funeral, a couple weeks later, go through and pick up the flowers and stuff. That's a better way, you can check your graves too, same time.
Remember a couple of years back, we got some of this stuff added on their responsibility for damages and stuff.
That's just as requested, correct, you didn't pay him for any of that?
What?
For the spring cleanup?
Well, we paid him.
We did this year.
Okay, we asked him to do it?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. We didn't do, he didn't do any trimming and mulching this year, so we didn't do that.
Yeah.
Um, I think he did have a couple of graves that were filled. I think I did five hundred dollars earlier in the season.
Okay, well, it's not be that no more.
Did the fifteen hundred dollars a month, is that, is that the same or did that go up?
It's the same. Same, wasn't it?
It was the same as last year's, but um. I was still paying him at the old rate, so on this check, I pick up that extra thousand dollars that I was, that I, this was his last check. So on his last check, I picked up that difference.
I go with my claims and not seeing.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, so that's a good project for Nick to clean up the flowers and we want to pay him, so.
Yeah, I could see you just take him over and pick him up, it'd be perfect, of course.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else, good with it?
I think it's good, I make a motion, we accept his contract for here.
Alright, there's a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, you want to sign this one? Alright, now we're timed to pay our bills. So this sheet here, the accounts payable, that's the bills we gotta pay out this month.
How many golf carts do you run through that street?
I think we only do like, um, five.
Five of them.
We don't do very many at all.
Okay.
We have to get new yearly stickers, I get those in and then I split that, I, I get them cuz we get more. Better deal in, in bulk.
Oh, yeah.
So I get enough and then um, I split that cost, I get a third of them and Cambridge gets two-third and then they pay us.
Oh, okay.
They pay us the difference. And then we've got where um, if somebody already has a cart and they have a plate, as long as their plate is in good shape, we just, kinda like the license branch, we just give them a new date sticker.
That saves us paperwork, yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions for Julie on that?
Lenny, did you, excuse me, uh, did you order the clamps and stuff you used up there at uh, on Johnson Street in that main brick? Okay, you paid those back to Cambridge?
Yeah.
Or did you buy any extras for us?
I bought two for us and two for them.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready, I'll entertain a motion to pay the bills.
I'm ready whenever.
Okay, I don't wanna step on somebody's toes, I make a motion, we accept the claims to the presenter.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. What happens if we don't approve? Bill collector start calling?
Uh, yeah, I don't, you don't approve them, I don't pay them till we fix it and. I mean, I have, I have the ability, if we're gonna get charged a late fee or something, to pay them, but other than that, if you say no. We've, we've had that happen on one um, vendor before for work, well, too, because we had a problem with milestone too, but, yeah, not very often.
What are the NSF checks?
People that don't, that they pay their electric bill and they bounce, I pay the, I get, it, it's charged back to my account. And then, we charge them a FIDA and then they pay us, but that's because I, I get charged it back at the bank. It's not mine, honest.
I see it looks like the same person, so then, do we stop taking checks from them or?
After two, yeah.
I think there's three.
For the same, well, now they're listed, they have more than one person, well, there was a situation with that one person. Because um, he, the first time he was not aware, um, because they took it out, they closed, they were supposed to just cancel his card. They closed his entire account, and so. He came in and told me to resubmit it and I resubmitted it and they didn't open his account back up right away, so that was a special circumstance. And it, it was taken care of, but normally, they get two, if they go past two, then it's cash for a year.
Oh, like, like the NSF checks.
If we, um, we have a new round of Trex, the Trex program is an awesome program that uh, the state has. Allowed, they, they use it with the counties to um, get unpaid taxes and things like that, but they allow. The municipalities to do it to get um, utility payments that have been left and unpaid. And um, so this is just uh, the letter of agreement allowing them to send the letters out for those people again this year. Cause there's a, I, yes.
Motion?
Yes.
Alright, you guys wanna work on that real quick? In the meantime, breathe, our next item will be the fund report and we'll be approving how much money is sitting in the bank.
There is time restraints on from when um. They get notified and they have to have time to. What is it, uh, make an appeal, they make an appeal to the state and then the state gives them our number, they have the right to make an appeal. To us if they question their bill, that, oh, it was paid or whatever, if they can show me or if I find that, you know, we've made a mistake or. They have a receipt where they, they paid it, usually, I've never had any of those.
Is this basically like a.
It comes out of their tax check.
State collection agency?
Kinda, yeah, it comes out of their tax check, so it will hold their tax.
Their state tax refund?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's been a very, very good program for us, we've, um, since it started, I think we've, we've brought in over twenty thousand dollars and I went back. Pretty much.
Signed for that.
The whole time, yeah, uh, most of them are people that walk away and just don't pay a final bill. Um, it's amazing.
Yep.
So.
Okay, I asked for a motion to approve the agreement between clearinghouse, Trex clearinghouse and town of Dublin.
I make a motion, we accept it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any questions over the fund report?
Should be the last page in your packet, if they're still in.
Now, is this before or after the claims? These funds?
Those are before the claims. This is December's.
Make a motion, we accept the plan for the presenter.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That one gets everybody's signature, is that right? Or nobody's signature?
Nobody's signature.
Okay. Alright, any other business to come before the board tonight?
These are just for you as the council president. It's stuff that we approved prior to and had Bruce sign and we changed since we don't have.
Is that for the FIDA?
Yes.
Cause he said he was gonna.
Yes. Did he, he emailed you with that and you got that?
Alright, if nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Just before, uh, on the State Street down there, the two thirty-eight, is it?
Two fifty-eight.
Is it still going?
It's still going through, yeah.
Kelly's boarding it up?
Boarding it up, yeah, okay.
I'll wait till next week when it goes down.
Well, yeah, we'll see what happens, wait till it gets colder, but if it goes in, we'll board it up, so.
So can we be reimbursed for the cost of the wood? We need to keep track of all that?
Keep, keep track of all that. We'll collect it just like on the shore. Or have to.
Alright, so maybe next, before next month, you can get some quotes for us.
I have some quotes ready.
I know the neighbor next door had an interest, I think I heard through the grapevine, so.
Have you talked to him, didn't you?
Of course, no, you're not talking about quotes to buy, you're talking about quotes to tear down, right, yeah.
Yes.
Excavator. Probably Dan Davis out of Hagerstown, although he does excavating, but I'm sure you can find some folks, get maybe three quotes.
Yeah, and then I wanted to look into maybe the town tearing it down ourselves, I'm gonna look into the cost of that as well, if that's possible to do that.
Were you the one that told us it had to been under a certain amount, a certain dollar amount?
Well, based on what they anticipated, yeah, I didn't bring that.
I can't remember, I couldn't remember whether you told us or whether.
No, yeah. Yeah, I don't have the time to look at it. But I think whatever it was, if we were gonna wait and see what, just what the quotes were for.
Right.
So you're saying figure it off of what our hourly charge is, go with the cheaper, is that what you're saying?
No, there were certain amounts, what, did you have it in minutes or?
Uh, I thought I had it wrote down.
No, what's, state law will allow you to do it on your own if the projected cost is under some, certain amount.
Oh, okay.
And I suppose what is the projected cost, well, would be based on your quotes and, I suppose, what you could.
I mean, is that cost per, per a project or per an event, I mean, where are you coming up with that figure?
I don't know, I mean, I'll have to look at the exact wording of the code, but it was something about whatever the projected cost was of your remedy. And our remedy was to tear it down, so it would have to be, what is the projected cost of tearing it down for you?
Is that clear, blood?
Yeah, so basically, basically.
I mean, I would include any labor.
Right, what, what he's saying is, is basically, we have, we can't, we have to adjust to whatever, whatever it's gonna cost us.
Quotes, yeah.
The quotes, whatever that is, basically, we have to, we would be below that, correct?
Well, no, not necessarily, but, and I don't know. Well, no, not necessarily, but, and I don't know what it is. Let's say that it was a thirty-five thousand dollar threshold, that the town could do it if you wanted to, if it was underneath that. And so consequently, you have a quote that comes in, and the quote is only ten thousand dollars. Well, that doesn't mean you can't do it. Even if it was gonna cost you twenty, you were still under that thirty-five thousand dollar threshold. So it's, it's not a matter of you're competing with what that quote is. It's just a matter of between what your own projections and what the quotes are will help determine, are you under that threshold? And then, once you're under that threshold, you can determine. And I suppose if it comes in and the threshold's thirty-five and the bid's forty-five, you might be hard-pressed to say, hey, this is still under the threshold, but maybe if you could prove that you can do it for under that cost, you can still do it. Most towns, I don't think, wanna do it internally, but I think you just need to go out and make an assessment for yourself and get a third-party quote too, so we can look at both of those, look at the code section, and then make that determination.
Answer to your question, now I understand.
Three quotes will be reasonable, right?
Oh, yeah.
You're running out? All right, anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion passes.